Joe.
Yeah, yeah.
No problem.
We are streaming live on YouTube.
Yes.
This is a special meeting of the governing body, January 4th, 2021. Happy New Year. And let me begin by calling the meeting to order. Following regular practice, we'll have a pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Cassidy Sanchez, a salute to the New Mexico flag led by Counselor Lindell, and an invocation led by Counselor Garcia. If we could all rise as we are able.
A pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag, the state of New Mexico, and the zeas symbol of perfect friendship amongst united cultures.
All right, I want to share with you all a message that I sent to our city team earlier this week, and I feel it'd be nice to share it with the broader public. So as we enter 2021, I wish you hope, health, and courage. May hope lead you and guide you to be the best that you can be as you strive to accomplish your dreams. May you and your loved ones stay strong and healthy as we continue the fight against COVID-19. May you be blessed with courage to take on new adventures, grow, and expand your horizons. I am confident that in this new year, we will begin to heal the pain, hurt, and divisions, and begin to build a brighter, better, and safer future for all. Please be there for each other, take care of one another, and continue to spread love, light, and kindness. Please be safe, be well, and have a blessed and happy new year. And with that, do we have any remembrances?
Are there folks who would like to remember somebody who we've lost? I see Counselor Romeroworth's hand is up.
I would just like to remember Claire Weiner. She's, her obituary has been in the papers a couple of weeks now, and I think there was an article from the last couple of days. She's a friend. She was deeply rooted in this community and cared very deeply about our well-being as a community, gave her time and energy to many different organizations and efforts in the community. And I just want to send condolences to her family and mourn her loss. It's, it came too soon.
Thank you. Others? Let's take a minute. We lost two more county residents today to COVID, according to the data. It continues to take a toll here in our community, so let's bow our heads and remember people we've lost and pray for their families and for everyone suffering from COVID right now. Thank you. Could the Assistant Clerk call the roll, please?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Counselor Abeta?
Here.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez?
Here.
Counselor Garcia?
Present.
Counselor Lindell?
Here.
Counselor Rivera?
Here.
Counselor Romeroworth?
Here.
Counselor V. Hill Copler?
Here.
Counselor Villarreal?
Present.
And Mayor Weber?
Present.
You have a court, man.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number six on our agenda is approving the agenda. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Counselor Lindell moved to approve it, and the second came from Counselor Hill Copler, I believe. Could we call the roll on that motion, please?
Yes, sir. Counselor Cassidy Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Romeroworth?
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill Copler?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Abeta?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Madam City Attorney, do you, before we go into the idea of an executive session, do you have an item you want to introduce to us, or is that the way to go here?
Mayor Weber, Counselors, I think we'd go into executive session first. This is one of the few times that the personnel matters, exceptions to the Open Meetings Act applies. And this is a discussion of the mayor's appointment of Christine Bustos Mahalcic as city clerk, and it's subject to Part H2 of the Open Meetings Act and 15-1.
So Counselor Rivera, do you want to make a motion to take us into executive session?
Sure, I make a motion that we move into executive session to discuss the matters listed on the agenda as recommended by the city attorney.
Second.
And Counselor Romeroworth has seconded that. Can we call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Romeroworth?
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill Copler?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Abeta?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez?
Yes.
And Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion carries. So we will leave this room and go to a different Zoom meeting room to resume as a, an executive session to consider this matter, and I'll see you over.
I've let Counselor Villarreal and Counselor V. Hill Copler in.
All right, let's see, are we, I know we're still live on YouTube, Joe.
Yes, sir.
And Counselor Rivera is here, but he's not on video, so that's okay, he's present. So everybody, doing a quick head count, is everybody here? Geraldine, you're here, that's, that's good, okay, one, three, four, five, six, seven. We're all here, okay, so Counselor Rivera, do you want to make a motion?
Sure, Mayor, thank you, I make a motion that we return from executive session stating for the record that discussion was limited to the matter listed on the agenda.
Second.
And there's a second from Counselor Romero-Worth. Could the, could the Assistant Clerk please call the rule?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes, here.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Romero-Worth? Counselor V. Hill Copler?
Here.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Abeta?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez? And Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Got a call, Mayor.
Motion carries, we are back in session. And the item before us is 8A regarding the appointment of and approval of a contract with Christine Bustos Mahalcic as City Clerk. I guess at this time I would entertain a motion, and then we can take up either amendments or see where we are with regard to a motion for this particular item.
Move to approve the contract as written.
There's a motion to approve the contract, and a second, the motion came from Counselor Romero-Worth, the second was from Counselor Lindell. We will now take up discussion of that, up, city attorney is going to help here.
Mayor Weber, Counselors, the item on the agenda is consent to an approval of, consent to the appointment of and approval of the contract with, so I would recommend that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, does that meet your concern, Counselor? Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second, and now we have an opportunity for discussion. And I know not everybody's mechanical hand is working, so I, oh, it is working, Counselor. Counselor V. Hill Copler, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, I have several amendments I'd like to, for the governing body to consider, and I'm just going to do them one by one. So I think I have four or five, depending, so the first one is to amend the compensation item 2A to read a salary of $111,320 per annum effective January 4th. So I would essentially be offering a 15% increase. And that's my amendment, and I would, like a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion or an amendment from Counselor V. Hill Copler to amend the salary, and a second from Counselor Garcia. Is there discussion of this proposal?
Point of clarification.
Yeah, Councilwoman Villarreal.
Well, you know, this change is based on a 15% increase, which is usually at least in past, I don't know, past increases for salary, that's usually the norm, is that correct? Or could Bernadette Salasada tell us if the increases, if there's a certain percentage that typically occurs?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Villarreal, the appointed positions don't necessarily fall under the personnel rules and regulations. However, the norm, or the, when there's a promotion, typically you would see usually a 10% salary increase for non-exempt or non-appointed positions.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments on the proposed amendment? I believe that, obviously, since this was negotiated previously at a different number, if we made a change in the contract proposal, we'd have to go back to the employee and ask her if she was willing to accept that salary. The answer may be yes, the answer may be no, but it deviates from what had been previously negotiated, just to be clear about it. And I think Councilwoman Villarreal asked a very good question, which is, is there a norm, or is there a standard behavior, a statistic? I'm not, I, from what I understand, there is not a specified percentage that is the basis for employment in pay increases, it's usually a matter of negotiation and, and situation. For example, if it's a longer contract, it may increase, it may start at a lower level and increase over time. If it's a shorter contract, it may, since it's a one-year contract only, have a level that's set slightly higher, is recognition that it may terminate at the end of one year without any proposition of an extension. So conditions change, circumstances and other factors weigh in on these, since they're not governed by a particular HR book, book of rules. Anyone else, any other comments on this proposed amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman V. Hill Copler.
I, I see Counselor Garcia's hand up, but I'm not sure if that's a real one or not.
I, I think, I don't I, I think, I don't know that it relates to this, I, Councilor Garcia, do you want to speak to this item or are you just waiting to make some points of your own after this?
I was waiting in line, but, thank you, thank you, councilor, for bringing that to attention.
I interpreted it as being, you would have items you wanted to raise when it was your turn, so Councilor V. Hill Copler has a amendment to the contract changing the compensation. Any other discussion on that one, because I understand there are three or four more coming?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councilor?
I just want to explain why, I, I'm not necessarily relating this to fifteen percent, but I think it's a, it's a significant increase from the former city clerk at one hundred eleven, three twenty, the former city clerk had an enormous amount of experience, was a certified municipal clerk, and, and had, may have even achieved that, that, well, never mind, she was certified municipal clerk, and so this is just in comparison to the expectations of that position, and it's, it's less than four thousand difference in this contract, which, which is written at a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, but, but it is a significant increase from not only the current, the current the proposed city clerk and the salary she has now, and certainly more than what the former city clerk was making, so I think it's a fair amount, and that's why I proposed it, thank you.
Thank you, I would, I would just counter by saying, number one, it's not good HR practice to compare apples and successors, it's not the same person, it's not the same job, it's not the same circumstance, and it really has very little to do with what previous compensations were, those are matters of, of contract negotiation as well, and that the salary that has been proposed is exactly the mid, the average of our department heads, it's not higher, it's not lower, it is the, it doesn't expand our pay band for managers, and that we won't be filling the position that Ms. Mahalcic currently holds so that we will be generating salary savings by not, by not adding another paycheck to the, to the city's employment role, so there is a offset to what she's asked for in terms of significantly increased responsibilities, bringing what she's done over the last two and a half, three years in constituent services, melding under, as was asked of her, under the reorganization, to bring constituent and council services into the city clerk's office to reimagine the clerk's office as an office of community engagement, and to bring technology and innovation into that, into that critically important front door for city government, so I think the, about average, it is average for what we pay our department heads who take on enormous responsibility and are working with a great deal of effort and stress and very little, and, and without a net. Let's see, I've seen, Councilor Cassidy Sanchez's hand is up and Councilor Romero Worth's hand, so.
I just, I wanted to clarify the average salary, is that, that's including our city manager's salary?
It's all of our top managers, yes.
What happens if we take city manager out of that, what, then what's our average salary?
I don't, I have not done that math calculation.
Mr. Mayor, I can, I can look at that calculation, also, if I may, I would like to add something to your statement, we have also stopped asking applicants about previous salaries, so along the lines of your statement about good HR practices, we firmly believe that it's not good practice to ask someone's previous salary, and I know this is a unique situation because it's a current employee, but in order to ensure that we're paying people fair and equitable and taking into consideration all aspects of pay, we no longer ask previous salaries, it's based on the job that we're recruiting for, and so that is good HR practice.
Thank you. I believe, councilor, come back to you, Councilor Garcia, Councilor Romero Worth's hand was up, and then I'll come back to you, Councilor Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor, can somebody speak to kind of surrounding regional pay of city clerks?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Romero Worth, I can, I can talk about that, I did reach out to a couple of the surrounding areas, the county's clerk pay is, of course, established by statute, and the highest pay, I believe, right now for Class A counties is approximately sixty-six thousand per year, but again, not set by statute, and then in looking at deputy county clerks in those particular areas, the pay is around ninety thousand for the deputy clerks, and typically they have one or two deputy clerks within the county offices. Burnalia, Burnalia County, for example, has a deputy clerk, but they also have Communications Department as well as an Office of Community Engagement, and then the Office of the Clerk. We are essentially trying to roll up all those departments to be under the, the clerk's office now. Rio Rancho, the, the pay, I believe, is approximately a hundred and six thousand, I believe they also have a deputy, and they are not responsible for communications or constituent services, they actually have two deputy city managers in addition to their city manager, and the city of Albuquerque, their Sunshine Transparency Portal was down due to the new year, they're updating, but in doing research, the last document that I found was in two thousand and nineteen, and the city clerk for Albuquerque was making a hundred and twenty-two thousand.
And are we, we're, we're asking this city clerk to do more than just be a city clerk? Can somebody address that?
I'd be happy to, I mean, I think that what, what has happened over the last couple of years is that the city clerk's job has changed, a part of it, which pertains to actual Election Day vote counting and running the election results reporting, has moved to the county, we all accepted that, and instead, the clerk's office has become a place for a whole set of new activities where residents of our city expect information, access to data, ability to search our website and find up-to-date committee minutes or meeting minutes of the city council, the governing body, they expect to see contracts that they can examine and see whether the city is doing its job in a way that in, gives people trust and confidence, it's really the front door to city government, it is a place for people to ask questions and get those questions answered, it still has the existing requirements that are in city code for meeting notices, packets, agendas, records retention, support for elections and public financing, liquor licenses, and other council services that help operate the day-to-day business of city government. What's happened is that on top of those core and code-specified responsibilities, city government is becoming a technologically and operationally more sophisticated part of our community, things like engaging in public surveys of our residents, which has come under our community engagement team, creating a dashboard for constituent concerns and complaints where they can track the resolution of the things that they're most concerned about in their neighborhoods, all of this is work that the city clerk's office under, as reimagined as a city engagement portal, really steps into a different dimension, and I think it's, it's an important transition, it's in part a function of what is changing in city government around us with the implementation of the ERP system and the recognition that technology changes how the city can function, and it's also, I think we're seeing with COVID, just how significant it is for us to implement these kinds of user-friendly innovations that make city government able to operate under extremely challenging circumstances, and we need to continue that process, it took us quite a while to get, can you, can you imagine where we would be if we were still signing all of our paperwork by hand without electronic signature in, in this current period of COVID-19 practices? Fortunately, we are able to transition to electronic signatures and the city government moves forward, I think we can anticipate more of those kinds of advances as we look at the city clerk's office moving into more technological solutions that are user-friendly for people who work for the city and people who are residents looking for services.
Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Councilor Garcia, your hand is up now to comment on this, I think you're muted, however.
Thank you, Mayor, I apologize, and if the councilor is done with, with the floor, then maybe, I think I was next, and my, my comment was kind of relating to that, so.
Okay, but I think we want to vote on her amendment.
I do, I do have comments in regards to the amendment.
Okay, good, then you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, so you just listed off a grand list of the increased duties due to the restructure, reorganization, and how the duties of the clerk aren't the same, do we have a job description for all of these additional duties for the clerk? Because I know that we have the current clerk duties and code, do we have a description of all of the additional activities written out, that way we can ultimately ensure that whomever is in this role, whether it be the person appointed today in front of us or person in the future, we can help hold them accountable to the duties, so do we have those duties written down anywhere?
Ms. Salazar or Ms. Mahalcic, do we have a overview of the job of the clerk as reimagined with the change in the reorganization that was adopted by the city council?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Garcia, yes, we started adding the additional job duties that we discussed, I, to my knowledge, I don't believe that there's been a job description for the clerk's position, but you are correct that there are additional job responsibilities that we've talked about tonight, and we do have a draft with those listed additional job duties.
Okay, so why was that not shared with us prior to this meeting, we asked for it, and, and, I mean, this, this is something that is critical, why do we not even have a copy of a draft in front of us tonight? If this is something that we're voting on, and it's critical to the components and nature of this position.
I can certainly take the draft and put it into our format and get that to you, and, yeah, I apologize for not getting it to you sooner.
Okay, well, I, I.
We have, we've had a pretty healthy discussion about some of the candidate's ambitions and goals for her tenure, should she be appointed or consented to in this, in this role, but it is an interesting observation that the HR director just offered, almost in an offhand way, that we have, as far as I know, never, or at least since I became mayor, never had a job description for the city clerk, we simply let the status quo be enough, and now that we're looking seriously at some changes over time to what the role would be, I think having more clarity of both about what the, the goals are for the appointment of this clerk and what the opportunities are is really a very timely thing to do.
Well, thank you for that comment, Mr. Mayor, but I would disagree that we did in some sense have a, a job description in regards to what's written in our city code, that's ultimately what we can hold the city clerk accountable to, and with these additional duties, we potentially don't know what we are agreeing to. We, we had asked for if there was a job description, and there was none, and I want to be blatantly clear that there was expressed, that there was none, and now we're hearing that there was a draft that, that has been worked on, that, that's completely opposite information that was provided to us, I find that highly disappointing that, that it's unfolding like this. Ms. Salazar, I got another question for you. When we hire employees, I know you said we don't look necessarily at their prior salary range, but do we look, do we take into account their experience of the position? And determine what salary we are going to implement with an employee, so for example, if we have, let's just say, an engineer, if we had an engineer and we're hiring for an engineer and somebody applied with twenty years' experience, would we offer them the same salary as somebody with no experience as an engineer, they might have worked in some capacity, maybe with the engineer, but they don't have any years of experience as an engineer, so would we offer the same salary to engineer with twenty years' experience and engineer with no years of experience?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Garcia, I think that there are a lot of determining factors when you're establishing salary, when you're hiring an employee or an appointed position, some of those things include budget, the, the recruitment of that position, how difficult it is to recruit for a particular position, if it's an appointed position, what's the duration of that appointment, there's a lot of factors that, that go into it, including experience, education, fit for the organization, there are a lot of factors that go into determining the salary for an incoming person.
So, I, I, I would like an answer, though, would we offer the same salary to an individual who has twenty years of experience as an engineer, to an individual who has zero years of experience as an engineer, straight out of college? And I, and I highly, and, and I'm getting a, a lot of fluff in regards to the response because I think ultimately the answer is no, I would be very surprised if we hired an engineer or any employee that has lots of experience and offer them the same salary as somebody who has no experience, and if we are practiced, if, if we're, as a city, not taking that into account in regards to the level of salary that we're offering staff, then I, I would like to learn more about how we are determining salaries, because you, you gave a list of dependent factors, and I understand that, but ultimately, we want to ensure that experience factors into what we are going to be playing, paying our employees, and I think that's what the, what the intent potentially of this motion is, or this amendment is, I think what's being proposed right now is a ten percent increase roughly from even what the prior city clerk was making, the prior city clerk was making a little over a hundred thousand dollars, so what's being proposed by Councilor V. Hill Copler's amendment is a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, which I think is a fair increase, given that we haven't got a clear description of what these additional duties are, except for what's currently written in city code, and so I think with that, what's being proposed in front of us is very, very fair, and, and so with that, I have no further questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. As to the additional duties, councilor, I don't think it's entirely fair to say that we haven't heard what they are, you didn't get a piece of paper with them, but we've been discussing them now for nigh on three hours. You didn't get a piece of paper with them, but we've been discussing them now for nigh on three hours. We've talked about the fact that we'll be, as per the reorganization proposal. Bringing public information, media communications, issues management, crisis communications. Civic engagement into the city clerk's office, that seems fairly straightforward. Continuing the work of supporting elections, which seems fairly straightforward. Making sure that the council packets and information are up to date, that seems fairly straightforward. Making sure that public information is. Flows smoothly to members of the media and the press and the public. Working with the government television station and video process. Records management, that seems fairly straightforward. Doing outreach to the community. Public engagement of all kinds. Attending council meetings, that's in the existing code. I think in the it's an interesting fact that while the code does mention items, I think, A through I. Of the stipulated responsibilities of the city clerk. I think the last item is and other such and other such items as may be stipulated by. The city count, the governing body or the mayor. And in in city code, there are about a hundred and seven other disparate mentions of the responsibilities of the city clerk. And yet we have not yet, we have not seen fit, to my knowledge, over the last. Certainly, the last three years, and I can't, I don't know in the four years prior to ask a. For a job description in the city clerk, nor do we have a job description for the city council members, nor for the mayor. We, none of us have job descriptions. We are serving by, as as we do, to the best of our ability. In the public interest, recognizing there are certain stipulated responsibilities. But that our work goes far beyond those stipulated areas that are required by code or charter. Counselor Casa Sanchez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I I I will say that I do agree with Counselor Garcia here, especially, you know, one of the pieces that I've really been discussing. Is that there is this discussion that the clerk's position is changing. And understanding how that change impacts things like salary. That it is a wonderful time to create that job description, to have it written down. We are a body that we like to write things down. It's why we pass resolutions and ordinances. We don't just talk about them and say, hey, we discussed this, it's it's good to go. You know, we write things down so that we really understand what we're looking at. And that is a piece that I will be really eager to see that I have, you know, been requesting for a couple of weeks to see prior to today. I was grateful for Ms. Mahalsek to bring us the bullet points. I very much appreciated that. You know, there, the other component that that I have to think about here as we are considering salary is just our financial situation. We are still in the middle of an epidemic, a pandemic, excuse me, much bigger than an epidemic. A pandemic that has had some economic impacts that are completely unforeseen. And that frequently, if not daily. Shadow every conversation I have about what is going on in city government. And this, this is another piece that I am really. Needing to consider and needing to think about as we look at this at this salary and get this information. Ms. Salazar, have you been able to compute that average for me yet?
I believe it's a little over one eleven.
Little over one eleven, okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. And then I I just, I also want a second, you know, I. The conversation around how we decide salary, I think, is something that needs to be much more there. And again, you know, this was, this conversation did feel a little bit. Looking for the right vocabulary word, but I've been staring at a screen for three and a half hours, so I can't. So it felt a little bit up in the air. And so bringing that back down, how we make these decisions, how we take a look at these things. It's important for us when we're approving contracts. It's important for us when we are passing budgets. It's important for us to get this information in advance on paper where we can really be looking at things. And so as we move forward, especially moving into budget season. I would really, I'd like to request now that that information gets to us in any of these situations that we are starting to consider salary changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, we have Counselor Vial Copler followed by Counselor Abeta.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to go back. Over the salary, my amendment. And again, I want to state that it's what I propose is a hundred and eleven, three hundred and twenty dollars. Which is approximately fifteen percent increase. And it's not chump change. I mean, it recognizes the increased responsibilities. And it's it's fourteen thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars more, if I've calculated correctly, from what the current employee is making now. Fourteen thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. And and since we didn't get a resume and and it's already been admitted that there is no city clerk experience. Now, I have. Some great hope that the city clerk responsibilities will be. Performed adequately and the during the term of the contract. I think that there's a lot of help available for Christine. But remember, this hundred and eleven thousand is still eleven thousand, eleven thousand more than the the former city clerk. Who had a bunch of experience when was a certified municipal clerk. So it's well above that. And that encompasses everything you said, Mayor, about the increased duties. But there's, remember, before this, you were saying that, oh, the city clerk doesn't need to. To do half the job anymore. So let's not forget about that. Because elections, because we're not half, but you know, a lot of duties are no longer there. So because elections are taken away. So it kind of evens out in a way. But but I want to say, there, there is a distinction between constituent services duties. Which are not in the realm of legal responsibilities. If a city clerk messes up, and I'm speaking to this as being a former district court clerk of the court. If if you mess up on any legal documents, that puts the city in a world of of issue. So this, you know, I think the city clerk role here outweighs because it's statutorily. And ordinance wise, it's important. It's, you know, mistakes on this are a world of difference than a mistake on not implementing. Or implementing a website wrong or or any of these other things, which are important too. But I'm I'm going to tell you. There is, I can't increase this. There is a city clerk job description and the number is twenty eighteen dash two seventy seven. So I I think I need to ask Ms. Salazar. Why, why we're saying there isn't one? City clerk, I have it right here. And I didn't get this from the former city clerk, by the way. I can attest to that. But there is a job description, it's on file, it's right here, two eighteen, twenty eighteen, I imagine, is when it was developed. And the the job number is two seventy seven, so it's right there. Now, I haven't read it, but I just wanted to spell this wrong information that we've never had a job description. I mean, I remember when I was HR director, we had a job description for every single job. And I don't know why anybody would just all of a sudden say, oh, get rid of them all, you know? That's just not the way it works. But nevertheless, there is a job description.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Vial Copler, is it a resolution? I am not aware of that, but I will.
No, this is in your format, can you see? I don't know.
Well, I can't see it.
Well, it's in your regular city recruitment notices. It is, it is all there, the same way all our other job descriptions are written. It's not an ordinance, it's not a resolution, it is a bona fide job description. And it doesn't say draft. But anyway, you know, I'll just go back to my point. And that is, I think this is a very generous increase. For an employee who has all good, all good intentions. And no doubt, with that kind of ambition and motivation can be a success this year. And eleven, a hundred and eleven thousand in three twenty dollars is a good salary. And you just heard, if you take the city manager's salary out, the average of these twelve positions, as Counselor, I think, Cassidy Sanchez asked. Is a hundred and eleven thousand dollars average? So I think that's way fair. And I and I, it sounds like a put down, sort of, maybe, that's, but it's not. I think it's a really generous offer. And that that's all I'll say about my amendment right now. But I want to remind you, Mayor, that I have other amendments to introduce. Thank you.
I'm aware, I remember. Counselor Abeta, followed by Counselor Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. Specific to the amendment, I I support the hundred and fifteen thousand. I'm looking at this as the chair of finance and fiscal years. So really, what we're talking about is fifty seven thousand, five hundred for the remainder of this fiscal year. And then fifty seven thousand, five hundred for next fiscal year. Because there, there is no guarantee after December thirtieth or thirty first that she's going to be the clerk. This contract ends mid-year. So there, there's no guarantee that we're going to spend over fifty seven thousand, five hundred come January. And so tho- those are my comments. If this, and additionally, if this was a multi-year contract, then I I would look more closely at the hundred and fifteen a year. But we're not talking about two, three, four year contract. We're talking about twelve months, six being in this fiscal year, six being in next. And in regards to this fiscal year, we are not filling her position. So we're actually going to be saving money as a result of of this contract. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Abeta, thank you. Counselor Rivera, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question is for Ms. McSherry. So since we're talking about a salary change. That the. Ms. Mahalsek would need to approve of, she's on. Can we ask her what her opinion is?
However, Counselor, you certainly can ask, she's under no obligation to answer tonight.
All right, Ms. Mahalsek, do you think the amendment proposed by Councilwoman Vial Copler is fair? Or are you? And again, I don't want to put you on the spot too much, so if.
Mayor, I think, I think this is out of line. I'm sorry, I'm uncomfortable with this. I think this is inappropriate.
Well, that's fine, then, we don't need to, we don't need to talk about it. Thank you.
On that point, on that point, Mayor, it's, at the end of the day, we would need to ask the question anyway. If we approve this, the question would go to Ms. Mahalsek.
Fine, let her have that conversation in in a private setting and we can come back and approve it or agree to it in a public setting. I am not comfortable with putting her on the spot like this. I object.
It is a little bit like a public salary negotiation, which I don't think any of us would enjoy if it were us. I think it's the kind of thing, given what everybody has said tonight. And I think a lot of what I'm hearing from Counselor Vial Copler and from Counselor Garcia and and Counselor Casa Sanchez and others. Is that we all live in a world where salaries are sensitive issues. In the public sector, it's public information, so we don't, it's not hidden from view. But most of us are aware that salaries are. Whether you're paid as an elected official or an appointed one or a member of a union or a. At-will worker, it's it gets a little sensitive to have your salary negotiated in a public arena. I understand what Counselor Rivera was. Thinking about, but I it'd be better off, I think, for all of us if we. We voted what we vote and then we'll deal with fallout from that down the road with the. Depending on how these votes come out, it's a little sensitive. Anything else, Counselor Rivera? I didn't mean to cut you off.
Now I'm ready to vote.
Okay, Counselor. Are there other people who wish to be heard on this item? All right, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion. Could the Assistant Clerk call the roll, please?
Clarification, please, Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Lindell.
Thank you. We are voting on the amendment, correct?
We're voting on an amendment to the compensation section of the employment contract. Which currently says that the compensation would be set at a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year. Counselor Vial Copler has proposed a reduction to a hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Romeroworth?
No.
Counselor Vial Copler?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Abeta?
No.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez? Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
No.
Mayor Weber?
No.
Motion. I'm not sure how that works.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
So the the contract is amended to reflect a salary of one hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Now, Counselor Vial Copler, you still have the floor for several other amendments you'd like to make.
Thank you, Mayor. So I also want to propose under two C. To strike that language in in its entirety. Because as it reads, if this contract is extended beyond its initial term. The employee shall receive pay raises commensurate with those afforded to other city employees. Well, I'm not necessarily saying I don't like that, which, but the point, the problem with this. Is the language that says if this contract is extended beyond its initial term. This contract ends with the current terms of term of the the mayor. And so if and if the mayor is still the same mayor, then it can be re, you know, the contract should be redeveloped. And I would think that, you know, there's several sections in this contract which would be redeveloped. So we would need a new contract at that time. And so this language, and I understand it was because it was in other lang, other contracts or or something like that. But item C is a moot point. This contract can't be really extended beyond its initial term. A new contract would have to be developed. So my amendment is to strike item two C.
So the motion from Counselor Vial Copler is to strike in its entirety item two C from the proposed employment agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Garcia seconds Counselor Vial Copler's motion. Is there discussion? Counselor, the city attorney's hand is up, I see. Is there something you want to clarify?
Mr. Mayor, Counselors, just just two technical points. It is possible this contract could be extended. So there is that possibility out there. It could be extended before it expires beyond its initial term. So that's why the contingency language is there. And then this language was not in prior contracts, it was a requested modification. B was in prior contracts.
May I ask how it could be extended beyond its initial term when there, when there is. Potential new city councilor, potential new mayor? How could that be? Are you binding future governing bodies?
Mayor Weber, Counselor, if if, for example, and probably the only example that would result in this would be if this mayor ran for reelection and won. And wanted to reappoint the city clerk for an additional length of time. And wanted to use most of the same terms of this contract and wanted to extend the initial term beyond the first term. So an amendment could be introduced to extend the initial term. Through, beyond December thirty first. But that would be the limited contingency that would make sense. But that would be the limited contingency that would make sense.
Well, and I think I pointed out in executive session that we are in the here and now. And there's, there's too many ifs, ands, or buts in this, and I think. Because of my next amendment, which essentially takes care of ambiguity, the one that's coming up. There, there is no, I mean, there is a, there is a termination, a term to this contract. Now. I think, you know, guaranteeing future pay increases on a contract like this for one year is, is. Isn't, isn't uh, isn't financially prudent. I mean, not to say that that wouldn't happen, but in this particular contract, there's almost, you know, it's almost like. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna make this contract go into the future. That's what we're saying with this contract right now on item C. And so I think item C is a moot point because this contract is a little different because it's all, it's a set amount of time.
Any other, I don't mean to cut you off, councillor, where you, you, you sounded like you were finished with your point.
I, I am.
Okay. Are there other uh, comments or explanations or observations about this particular item? Councillor Cassidy Sanchez and then councillor Garcia.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. You know, I, I think part of it for me is that we've been having a lot of this discussion, looking at Christine as a department head. And so um, you know, and part of the decision just around salary had to do with. What is that average department head salary um, and. Kind of the complicated place that we are in with the merging of this position. So I'm, I'm not actually in favor of this amendment for that reason. That if we are really looking at this from the standpoint of how are we comparing her salary, looking at it from a department. Head standpoint, I do think that it is fair that in the situation that her, if her contract is extended, that she is. Continues to be treated um, in that similar measure, matter when it comes to um, that pay. Uh, I think that that has been kind of a complicated piece of this of, of. Where we are viewing the city clerk position as it is being combined um, with the Department of Community Engagement. Um, so I am not in favor of, of this amendment. Um, I just wanted to express my reasoning why. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor.
On that point, though, I just want to mention that the prior city clerk did not get. The salary increases that were afforded to all other city employees. She, this prior city clerk did not get this. So it kind of.
Fair point, fair point.
Kind of, councillor Cassidy Sanchez, I appreciate what you're saying, but that wasn't the philosophy last month.
And to be fair, other contracts with other employees who have contracts either do or don't have some of these provisions. They're not, they're not boilerplate. Uh, councillor Garcia, you raised your hand, I believe, and so does, and after that councillor Abeta has the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Mayor. Just want to, I guess, point of clarification for the public that might be watching this. Because our city attorney, Ms. McSherry, said that the uh, appointee had asked for this to be in the contract. Um, but we, we've, as we just noticed, we've got to understand this is a negotiation. Unfortunately, right now, we've got to negotiate on our end publicly. Um, so with that, just because the, the, the appointee requested it, does not mean it has to be mandatory. We in our, our end, as the, the entity that's hiring the appointee. Have within our rights and responsibilities to take into consideration. And either approve or deny that request that the appointee has put forth. Uh, so with that, do we have any other contracts where we ask for? Um, it's, you know, salary raises in the future in, in, in the instance like this? That, that are on, on a term. So I know that there might be contracts that are multi-year termed contracts. Where three, four-year contracts where such language is incorporated, but do we have any, any contracts that? Such as this one, that is gonna be a one-year contract where a potential pay increase would not even affect. The employee in this contract. Um, so it's, it's in, in some senses unnecessary. And I, I understand where it is uh, potentially be usable in the future. As Ms. McSherry said, we can take this contract and use a lot of the language, but what's prohibiting us? From adding the language in the future. So, so to use your example, Ms. McSherry, the one, only one instance where it might come into play. Why couldn't we, if your example plays out, why couldn't we add this language when the new contract is renegotiated? Why does it have to be now? Does it have to be now? Could it wait until it's renegotiated potentially later at a future date? Is this a time-sensitive matter? No, no, it's.
Mayor Weber, councillor, you are asking me the question?
Yes. Do we, do we need to make this amendment now? Or could it wait until a potential contract negotiation in the fall? Is there anything prohibiting that?
However, councillor Garcia, um, there's nothing requiring this contract. Um, other than the, the appointee is not accepting the appointment unless she gets a contract in place that has some protections.
Um, right, no. I, I understand that, but I think in that sense, it doesn't pertain to the current contract here. Because um, I, I can only speak for myself. I know that, let's, let's use your example. And um, if Ms. Mahalcic's contract is up for renegotiation. I would be in support of adding this amendment, but right now it's unnecessary. It's not necessary. That, to me, this is language that just is, i- i- it does nothing to the contract. I understand that uh, the appointee has asked for it to be included, but there's nothing that. It, it does not impact anything in the sense where if we, we withdrew it. There is the opportunity to add it should it, when it really matters, be added at a future date.
Ms. McSherry, your hand's up.
However, councillor Garcia, it, it does add something to the contract. It is a contingency. It might be a contingency that is unlikely. But it is a contingency. If this contract were extended during its current term to go beyond its initial term. Then that provision would be in place during the term of this contract. Um, so the councillor would have, the council, governing body would have a choice to either do that or not do that. It would, if you extended the initial term, you would have to consider those provisions. If you decided to let the contract expire and then renegotiate a new contract after this one expired, then it would not apply. So it's, it does apply to narrow circumstances, but it does, it is a different, it is a term of the contract and it would apply. During the, during the term of the contract.
So during this term. Would this employee be eligible for an increased commensurate with any pay increases afforded to city employees in this fiscal year?
However, councillor Garcia, no.
Okay, so then why should we include this? At this moment.
Councillor Garcia, it provides for a contingency, so it really, it is a, it is, it is a term of the contract that is a. Potential inclusion.
I think, I think we're getting caught up in, with all due respect, uh, issues of a little bit of uh, legal. A legal debate rather than what a contract with uh, a potential city clerk is all about. And frankly, what management, good management of city government is all about. What we're attempting to do as we negotiate this contract, or one with the city manager, which we voted on about a year ago. Or with the city attorney or with other individuals who have a contract with us. Are the, not just the terms of and conditions of employment, but the philosophy of employment. And the uh, spirit of city government. And I think what uh, if you're looking at this very narrowly, councillor Garcia. The item two C will not be operative this year under any circumstances. You're absolutely correct. However, what we are, I think, intending to signal. Uh, both with the salary offer that was made and with this condition that was included. Was our respect for the talents of the individual. Uh, the enormity and significance of the work to be done. Uh, the confidence of the governing body in uh, this individual to accomplish those tasks. And that, given all of those understandings, the contract is a sign of not only. A set of terms and conditions, but a uh, employment relationship. A working relationship, a partnership with somebody who has uh, spent. Something like seventeen years working in city and county government. Who has uh, done many of the tasks of a city clerk when she was working uh, in the county government. Who in the last three years has reimagined uh, citizen engagement and council services. And who I believe is worthy of our uh, respect and recognition. The way you do that in a contract. Uh, in my experience is by the kinds of uh, terms, whether they are in, uh, implemented in a year or not. Uh, that reflect those uh, uh, signs of uh. Respect and a sense of investment in a longer game. A, an ongoing effort to make city government uh, the kind of place where talented managers, workers. Uh, employees will want to be part of this very uh, significant, important and. Uh, challenging endeavor of modernizing and improving city government. Uh, so that the services that are provided to the residents of Santa Fe are always top-notch. So uh, you, if you read it as a uh. Narrow compensation offer, I think you're probably right. It won't be implemented this year. If you think about it as a ongoing investment in the professional. Talent and uh, abilities of our managers and other employees as it, as a, a contract would apply to them. Or vendors with whom we work, we seek to treat people fairly, equitably, respectfully. And uh, in a way that will get us ultimately better services for the people of Santa Fe.
So I think. Thank you, Mister Mayor, but, but I.
I guess what I'm saying is the context is a little different than the way you were presenting it.
I, I, I don't believe so. I, I look at the contract as what it is with for one year. And what, what the intention is to be for foresaw and forecasting, which I completely understand. But the contract is for one year, and when the opportunity and the right time to appropriately address forecasting in the future. There is potentially that opportunity, and I think, you know, and, and, and. I, 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 by no means is this amendment disrespectful, so I hope that was not being implied. Because I, I think I speak for the rest of the governing body that we all highly respect Mahal- Ms. Mahalcic. I think this is more so looking at what is in front of us, what is the next year contract to deal with? Do we, you know, in that sense, do we look at contracts for any other contract and say, we're gonna add these incentives? That don't necessarily deal with this year, but we're just gonna add them anyway. We don't, we don't usually do that with our contracts, and I think that's where I'm just trying to keep us in alignment with. Let's look at what is in front of us for the next year. What, what are the expectations? And when the appropriate time comes to add in the appropriate additions, there, there will be a time to facilitate that. And to, to imply that by pulling this, it's showing a sign of disrespect and a sign that we don't support our employees. I, I think that's where the, the information is maybe being misinterpreted on your end, Mister Mayor. Because we, I highly respect Ms. Mahalcic, and if there is the opportunity to keep her on board and add this incentive. I would be in a hundred percent favor of this. I just think when we're adding additional language that doesn't necessarily pertain to what's in front of us. Why add it? There's no, there's no need. It just muddies up the water. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Um, your hand uh, was up councillor Abeta, but now it is down.
Yeah, my question was, was answered. Thank you, Mayor.
Fair enough. Uh, other uh, folks who wish to speak to this proposed amendment at this time? Uh, councillor Veo Copley, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, just, just one last piece, and it, and it goes to my main point of why I. Uh, propose this amendment is because it really is, and you, into your admission, it's im- it's impossible to implement in this one-year period. And it's moot. That was my point. And I don't believe in cluttering contracts up with moot points that don't even apply. So um, I, that's why I produced this amendment, to make it a better document. That's all. I think, you know, if it raises false hopes, that's what it does, and it's, it's impossible to implement. So why have it, you know? All the other points I agree with, you know, if, when, when and if there's a future contract. I think every employee should get the same thing. Uh, you know, the, the last city clerk, and I believe the city attorney, did not get this. So, you know, all that discussion about treating everybody blah, blah, blah is good. But we didn't do it really wholeheartedly, but now there's an opportunity to do it next time. But we can't do it this time. That's because we're in a, a different time period here. And so that's why I introduced the amendment, not to begrudge anyone, but just to say, hey, let's clean this up because it's impossible to implement. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments at this time? I don't see any other hands that are up, and so I believe we should uh, uh, would the assistant clerk please call the roll on this amendment? Which would strike item two C from the contract.
Uh, yes, sir. Councillor Romero Worth?
No.
Councillor Veo Copley?
Yes.
Councillor Villarreal?
No.
Councillor Abeta?
No.
Councillor Cassidy Sanchez?
No.
Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor Lindell?
No.
Councillor Rivera?
No.
Con- uh, I'm sorry, Mayor Weber?
No.
All right.
Okay, the, that particular amendment was uh, defeated. Councillor Veo Copley, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the, the last amendment I'll introduce is regarding the term of the contract. Uh, I think, uh, I think we all seem to have some consensus, maybe in the last discussion we had. That we should be more clear about the term of this. It's really a, a contract that, that terms out at the end. Of the current administration. Uh, so I would like to strike the language in its entirety. And replace it with, this agreement shall terminate on December thirty first, twenty twenty one.
Your second?
Second.
I hear a second from councillor Monverial.
Can you explain where it was exactly the?
Number three term.
It's page two of four, the, the single paragraph under term. Currently reads, this agreement shall terminate with the mayor's term as determined by the then-current law. Determining the end of the mayoral term unless otherwise extended in accordance with charter and ordinance requirements or terminated pursuant to section four of this agreement. And the amendment would simply say, would you say it again, councillor Veo Copley?
Yes, this agreement shall terminate December thirty first, twenty twenty one. I think that's more clear.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Uh, is there discussion from uh, or clarification from the city attorney? Or from other members of the governing body? Uh, city attorney, your hand is up, and then we'll go to councillor Cassidy Sanchez.
Mayor Weber, councillors, we might wanna consider including or pursuant to paragraph four, that last clause. Um, I know earlier we didn't mention that in executive session, but I was just looking at it, um, because there is a potential alternative termination.
Okay, I'll agree. I'll, I'll change my motion if the seconder agrees.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So is there a, a, do we have the ability? Maybe you could do this, councillor Veo Copley, read the amendment as it currently reads, or as it would make that sentence read.
Sure. This agreement shall terminate December thirty first, twenty twenty one. Or pursuant to section four of this agreement.
Is that, uh, city attorney, is that what you were striking, what you were looking for in terms of an uh, adjustment?
Mayor Weber, Counselor, I think that is what I said, but let me, let me see if I can come up with a best proposal here. Unless otherwise, terminated pursuant to section four of this agreement would probably be the most clear option. I guess we should.
Okay. I agree. I think that's even more clear. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a clarification on the amendment, and Counselor Cassidy Sanchez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick quick question. It's kind of a, probably a moot hypothetical, but so if for some reason, maybe the mayor decided he was tired and wanted to go move to a tropical island in October, he stepped down and Counselor Lindell took over. So that would mean that if, the way that it's originally written, would the clerk's contract end on October first, or would it be an extension of when Counselor Lindell would take over? This is probably a moot point, but I'm just, I'm just curious. So it would end on December thirty first, regardless of anything that could happen between now and then, correct?
Mayor Weber, Counselor Cassidy Sanchez, I think what you're hypothetically, you're suggesting, I think, is what is protected against in the existing language because Counselor Lindell, should she become mayor, probably has the right to appoint her own city clerk.
But if we change the contract to how it is here, then she would not have that right until December thirty first.
Mayor Weber, Counselor Cassidy Sanchez, we probably cannot take away that right contractually, which is.
On that point, the current mayor term, whether it's Mayor Weber, or in this hypothetical pro tempere Lindell, the term would expire December thirty first, no matter who it is. Because a new mayoral term would begin January first, twenty twenty two, whomever that may be. Whether it be Counselor Lindell, Mayor Weber, you know, whomever it may be, that's, that's the additional term. So I think the hypothetical doesn't, doesn't matter.
Well, except for how it, how it reads is the current mayor's term, not the current mayoral term. So I'm just, I'm just curious if this changes things. Again, this is one of those, probably doesn't matter, but, you know, are we significant? Is there going to be a substantial change to the meaning of the contract if we do this?
Point of order, I don't see current mayor anywhere in that language.
You're right, current is not there. It'll, this agreement shall terminate with the mayor's term. Yeah, so there's no current.
Correct.
And Mayor Weber, Counselors, I think we would need to interpret this as personal to Mayor Weber because I mean, we can do, I have not analyzed our charter as to that particular circumstance, but I would be surprised if a new mayor, even living out the term of a prior mayor, but like I said, I have not looked at this specific question. I would be surprised if that mayor, even if serving by default, wouldn't be able to appoint their own staff, but we can look at that question. It seems very hypothetical.
I think Counselor Cassidy Sanchez acknowledges it's a bit hypothetical, but we're looking, we're parsing the language very closely at the moment. Are there other, I didn't mean to cut you off, Counselor Cassidy Sanchez. Did you have any other?
No, I'm just wanting to make sure that we understand that it potentially, in some worlds, that if we change the language, it could potentially change exactly what this contract.
Gotcha. Thank you. Any other comments on this particular proposed amendment? Which would effectively change the language to a date certain rather than coinciding with the termination of the mayor's term, and add the language at the end regarding the termination pursuant to section four. Any other comments? All right, in that case, could the Assistant Clerk please call the roll on this amendment?
There. Counselor Vialco?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Abeta?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Romero Worth?
Yes.
And Mayor Weber?
Yes. Okay, that, that amendment has been adopted to the contract. Counselor Vialco, you still have the floor.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, I didn't realize you had, that was, that was the end of it for your amendments. Very good. Thank you. And now, Counselor Garcia, you had raised your hand for not to speak to any of Counselor Vialco's amendments, but because you had something you wanted to introduce of your own.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first, I got a couple of questions before I introduce an amendment. And in particular, I want to look at section four, the separation section. In particular, section A. In the means of being fair and transparent with other city employees, which employees are offered the opportunity for severance in an instance like this? That's, that's in front of us. I know that there are instances of severance where there's potentially a reduction in workforce or other means where severance might impact employees, but are there any instances, let's say, for example, let's say a parks worker. If a parks worker is fired by the mayor or asked by the mayor to resign, is this employee offered a severance package? Ms. Salazar?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Garcia, there are three individuals within the city government that have a contract that include a severance package that it, that's the city clerk, the city attorney, and the city manager. In addition, the example that you just used with the parks employee, there, there's a whole different process with regard to discipline up to and including termination, due process when you're appointed or exempt at will. It's those procedures do not exist. And I don't know if you have anything else to add, Erin, I saw that you were raising your hand.
Mayor Weber, Director Salazar, I think you addressed most of the concerns I had with that hypothetical. In addition, governing body members and the mayor are not allowed to be involved in the personnel matters of classified employees. So the mayor would never fire the parks employee or ask them to resign.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. Are there, I mean, so with that, you listed out the three employees that are currently, that fall into this position where they are at-will employees and are offered an opportunity for their, I'm so sorry, they're offered this opportunity to receive compensation if they are fired. And that's, that's, and this, this is only applicable in the instances if the mayor fires the individual. Are there, I mean, to me, that seems out of line with what should be best practice. If an individual is asked to resign or fired, to me, that means they're not doing their job. So why should that individual be eligible for compensation? And I'll ask the mayor why he believes that if he has to fire somebody or ask for their resignation. And, and, and I, I would, I would like a truthful answer why you believe this person receives, deserves compensation, and, and not because it's the best practice or the humane thing to do. Honestly, why, why should an individual, if they're not doing their job, and they are getting fired, why should they be eligible to continue to receive compensation?
It is, notwithstanding the fact that you don't like the answer, it is best practice. It is.
On that point, Mr. Mayor, we, we've established that it's not best practice by the state.
We have established that.
It's not, it's not best practice by the federal government. The only example we've been given best practice of is that it's best practice of the county of Santa Fe. So I want to make that clear for the record.
Correct. Your record is inaccurate, so I'm not acceding to your point. I think there are many examples, not only in the public sector, but in other parts of enterprise that say to people, if you are fired without, as Ms. Salazar said, the, the, some of the protections and processes that are accorded to people in other types of employment, it is best practice to provide a, in this case, three months, not a, not the kind of extended payments that we've seen in other places to employees as part of their compensation and part of their leaving leaving employment. You hypothesized only one example of why someone would be fired. You hypothesized they were fired for doing a poor job. And we've witnessed, and you, you've talked about it, to your credit, a national government where people are fired for all kinds of reasons at the federal level, where they are, their integrity is impugned. We watched a White House advisor on national security who testified in front of a congressional hearing about improprieties that he witnessed. As soon as the opportunity accorded itself, he was summarily fired for his courage. This is reprehensible behavior, and I think we all know that it happens in certain circumstances. People who have had positions in city government are fired for all kinds of reasons, whether they are warranted or not. You simply can't posit that in employment in, in in the, in the public sector, decisions are always made based on performance alone. There are other factors, and there are very few buffers or processes to give an individual a chance to make their case. I think HR professionals in both the public and the private sector would tell you that this kind of a part of a contract, far from being an exception, is really the rule. It's how, it is a practice that is frequently done, and we're not carving, carving out any new territory. I know for a fact that in other contracts that predated my arrival here, people who have had important jobs, while they may not have gotten a severance pay, they had, they negotiated reversion rights to a previous job or a position within their prior department. And that was regarded as a, both a gesture of reasonable fairness and a way of recognizing that there is a substantial career risk and personal risk to being fired from such a publicly visible job, whether it's warranted or not by performance. So I think there are a number of reasons why it is considered a common standard practice where contracts for at-will employees in many different realms of work are given that, that gesture of negotiating, that is negotiated as something that people would expect to be part of a package. I think three months, considering what we've heard from other contracts here and in other jurisdictions, is far from excessive. And again, I think if you look at, they're, they're, Counselor, you and I disagree on this, and I do so with great respect. I think contracts are more than just a legal document. I think there is more to a, an agreement that that takes the form of a contract than simply a series of dollars and cents. We're investing in people. We're investing in a management team. We're trying to build and grow the capability of this government to be run with great competency and great compassion and respect. And part of that is the way in which you craft a contract. The words are not the only thing that's important on the paper. Contracts are living documents, and they are agreements between people of good faith and goodwill. This is part of that good faith and goodwill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. But from the standpoint of political appointees, and you said there's many examples. I mean, you've only been able to share the example of Santa Fe County with us, so I'd love to hear all the other additional examples that you, that you might know of, because from, from my understanding, and it's pretty rare in the instance that a severance be paid out to a political appointee. Political appointees understand that, to use your words, it is a career risk to take on a political appointment job. That is the risk you're taking. That's, it's, it's part of the job. It's part of the job description. You have to understand that when you take on a political appointment, you might finish out the term with that individual, or you might be terminated early for, for due cause or non-cause, but that's the, that's the at-will. That's what happens with at-will positions. You talk about investing in employees. I don't understand how investing in a severance to what would be an employee that is out the door, what, how does that invest? Because to me, that, that, they don't match up. You're not investing in somebody that is no longer part of the organization. I, I think the intention of this is that should there be an instance where the employee is forced out, they have a cushion, and I completely understand that. But it, the means of a severance is not the means to go about that. There are other appropriate legal means to ensure that there is a cushion for that.
What would you propose?
My, I'm eager to hear. Well, I think that's, there's, there's, there's legal ramifications that can be had. If an employee is wrongfully terminated, there can be legal interventions in that, in that behalf. I do not believe offering a golden parachute to a political appointee is best practice for us. It's not. We saw what happened with Wall Street with the golden parachutes. It was not best practice. We need to ensure that we are investing the taxpayer dollar the best that we can. And I know that this is only in the instance should Ms. Mahalcheck be fired, or you ask for her resignation. But I, I want to ask the question, what happens in the instance of, and this is hypothetical, but what happens in the instance that if our current mayor runs for reelection and is unsuccessful, and between the election day and December thirty first, the appointee is fired or asked for their resignation? What happens in that instance? Because to me, that is offering that golden parachute that I know we can't have you finish out the term with us, so I'm going to fire you or ask for your resignation. That way, there can be that parachute that's off landing. And I don't agree that that should be there. I think being a political appointee, you take on that risk. Whether you finish out the term or don't, that's the risk you take. And you've got to understand by who you're accepting that appointment from. In the example that you gave with the current president, it might be a tumultuous appointment that you have to deal with. You have to understand the situation you're getting yourself into. It doesn't fall solely on the appointee. It also falls on the appointer as well. And so with that, I want to introduce an amendment to strike section A, or in section four, set under separation, I want to introduce an amendment to delete section A.
There's a motion to delete section four A from the contract.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to second this for discussion because I'd like, I have some points to make about it.
Okay, very good. We have a motion. We have a second from Counselor Vialco. I will open the floor for discussion. And Counselor Vialco, since you have points to make, why don't you take the floor now?
Thank you. I, I certainly agree that the city has placed itself in a strange in a strange predicament, I think, with offering not only severance pay, but with offering even reversion contracts. In my day, and I thought it was a reasonable practice, the only person who got a reversion contract was the police chief, because they were, they climbed the ladder in the military mode, and they were hard, you know, it was a different animal to recruit a police chief. So investing in our own, in that kind of situation, was important to the city. When I return now as a counselor, I, I, I don't even know. In fact, it's probably going to be a request to find out how many of our city employees have reversion contracts, because I think it's also something that deserves study. So severance pay deserves study. Reversion contracts deserve study. I think we've gotten a little bit way out there on all of this. But it, it is related to this contract. I know this language was in the former contract. And the only problem I have with, with it now, because I, I, you know, I, I don't know that this is the proper time for a year's contract to, in, to take all of this away and then be different from what we've given other exempt employees, which I wholeheartedly understand Counselor Garcia's points, because they're spot on. But it's a whole other animal that this governing body needs to undertake and, and, and determine, who are we? You know, why are we treating at-will employees as if they have these rights? I think it's a dangerous path to go down. That's not a discussion for here. But, but I want to point out that because this was in a former contract, and that city clerk had Boku years of experience and years of service, it was still three months. We're talking about a one-year contract here, and we're still offering three months. That's 25% pay of 11, $111,320 for a, a job that that person didn't do and was let go for. Now, if you put it in that perspective, it's on, it's, it's really above and beyond the call of no duty. So I think three months is too many. I, I would say one month, and put it in perspective of a year's employ, of a year's employment. Three months for a one-year job that a person gets fired for is a whole hell of a lot of money for a job that they didn't do correctly, assuming, you know, I'm not talking about Ms. Mahalsek. I'm just talking about the contract language. That's way too much. If you put it in perspective of one year. So if you, if you do, do the math, and I'm sorry, I should have done it, what is 25% of 111,320? And I'm talking about a fourth of the year. That's three months. That's a lot of money to escort someone out the door for asking them to leave because they didn't do their job. I don't know. That doesn't sound right. So I, I, I know Counselor Garcia has taken it out completely. My point is, I don't know. I, I don't know if we should do that at this juncture, because this is a big policy issue which deserves more discussion than what we're considering here. But I do want to make the point that, you know, if I was making the amendment, I would have, you know, considered that, and then I would have also cut down on the amount of months. So those are my points. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Others who wish to be heard on this particular item, Councilwoman Barial, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I, I guess I'm just trying to understand what provisions, if, if legal thought about the provision that if someone were to actually, if the mayor were to request that the city clerk would resign and right before their term is going to end? How do we prevent that from happening?
Mayor Webber, Counselor Barial, it wouldn't just, it couldn't just be a resignation. It would have to be a request to resign or a termination.
Right, okay.
So I'm not sure there's a way to prevent it from happening. This is a similar benefit that's been offered in our contracts in the last several years.
So you don't think about that? Possible loophole?
Mayor Webber, Counselors, no, I don't not think about it. I do think about it. It is a possibility as to whether or not, I mean, I think we would have to really look at that circumstance. And certainly, we could look at other language. Oh, I just muted myself. If there's a concern that that's potentially going to happen, we could add in some sort of other language regarding that period of time. We tried to circulate the contract in advance, so that if there were concerns like that, we could raise them to, and discuss them. I haven't come up with alternative language based on that concern.
Yeah, I guess that's something that I wish we had in place, so we wouldn't have to think about what ifs, that it wouldn't happen towards the very end of a, of, of the contract, even if it was that the, the mayor terminates or was asked for the resignation of the city clerk. It just that, it just sticks in my mind out there, and I just wish there was a, some language that could prevent us from having to worry about that. The other thing I think about is what if, I, I think about the flip side scenario, where what if the city clerk is doing their job and asks to do something they felt was unethical? And so in this scenario, the mayor decides to fire them because they don't follow what they want. So to me, that is the political conundrum. It could go either way. It could be the situation that Counselor Garcia said, and also it could be in this scenario. So I agree with Councilwoman V. Hill Copler, that this is more of a policy issue of consistency, and I don't remember it being necessarily the norm when I started. And it seems to change depending on who's looking at the job or whatever position it is. Also, it changes with the administration. So I think we need to look at that, like, bigger picture moving forward. I just think that, I, I'm trying to think of different scenarios for why this could be a protection mechanism for somebody that actually is doing their job. So I think that's important to note. I just, back to you, Director or Attorney McSherry, is there anything that you suggest that would prevent, that would kind of fill that loop, what could potentially be a loophole about resignations occurring right at the, sorry, not resignations, that request for a resignation right at the end of their contract term?
Mayor Webber, Counselor, so I, I think you pointed out that there's two sides to that coin, right? So I think what you're talking about is a situation where the termination is happening just to benefit the employee financially, rather than based on a sincere desire to separate with the employee?
Correct.
And how would we assess the sincerity?
Good question.
I, I mean, I think that's the difficulty here, is that it is a security offered to the employee. Is it, you know, does it cover all possible nefarious hypotheticals? Maybe not. But, I mean, if that was, I do think it would be nice to set up some sort of a framework, if, if that's a, a big concern or a concern like an ongoing. This is, this is in existing contracts as well. There's only three, just to clarify, I think a few things were raised about various contracts that might be out there. The only three employees who have a contract, but there's only two currently, are the city manager and myself. There aren't any reversionary clauses hidden out there in the city government. There was one with City Manager Littenberg's contract, because he was in the fire department and had similarly, to the example raised regarding the police chief in, in history. So he, he had a similar reversionary clause in order to not lose retirement benefits that he would be at risk of losing. He didn't go back to being a firefighter. So that, but that type of clause does not exist currently in the city. This clause does exist, very similar in my contract and in City Manager Lepan Hills' contract. So it's essentially been a benefit the city has offered through these contracts. It's not required, and we could look at ways to contextualize it better. I have not gone through a thorough evaluation of what that would look like.
Thank you for that. I don't know really what to do with that loophole. I mean, I'm hoping that won't happen. That would look really, would be very distasteful for, for that scenario to happen about, towards the end of this contract. But I'm going to hope that that doesn't happen, and I just think we need to move forward with making consistent contracts for these particular positions, even though they are political. So I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Counselor Casa Sanchez, your hand was up and then it went down.
Yes. Being the brilliant mind that she is, City Attorney McSherry made my point moot. So thank you for, for pre-answering my question.
Counselor Rivera, your hand is up.
Thank you. Ms. McSherry, do you know if the deputy chiefs have a revisionary contract? Or revisionary language that allows them to go back?
Mayor Webber, Counselor Rivera, I, I am not aware of that. If, I don't know if Director Salazar is on here. That's not my understanding, but if it is, that's a surprise to me.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Rivera, I'm unaware of any other contracts with employees. The only contracts are, as I mentioned, with the city clerk, city attorney, and city manager.
All right. It's been traditional that the deputy chiefs have one, so it's, it would be interesting to see if, if that still is in effect or not. Ms. McSherry, since we can't ask the contractor, some of this language may be dependent on whether she accepts the salary that was just passed by the governing body. So I don't know how, I don't know how that would work, because if, if the financial benefit were to be higher, then there may be less, it may be less ideal to look at some kind of severance pay, but if she were going to accept a lower salary, then it might. So that's what I'm struggling with right now. Again, it, it seems like maybe you and the mayor have had some discussion with her. I don't know if, how we would work that out, or even if that's possible.
Mayor Webber, Counselor Rivera, I'm not, I'm not terribly understand the question, but I would want to point out that the severance pay is the primary reason an employee would enter this contract. There's very little else offered, and, and the appointment could be made without the contract.
I think the salary is a big reason to jump into it.
Mayor Webber, Counselor, the salary could be set by the mayor if, if the contract weren't put in front of the governing body.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything else? At this time? Counselor Rivera, anything else? No?
No, thank you, Mayor.
No worries. Counselor V. Hill Copler, you have your hand up.
Thank you. I, I, I had a question, I have a question, but I, I'm curious about the point that Ms. McSherry made just now. We're saying, well, if we don't have a contract, the mayor can set the salary, whatever, whatever he deems appropriate for, for him. So that's kind of a loophole, too. Going back to Counselor V. Adial's question, but I think we're all trying to operate in good faith, and I guess my question for Ms. McSherry is with regard to the this clause, and that is, I know this was, was explained that this was in the former city clerk's contract, and it's in your contract, it's in the city manager's contract, and those contracts were set for four years. And it's kind of relates to the point I made earlier, and that is, well, you know, that's an expectation, three months for four years. How, how do you explain or, or rationalize three months for one year's work? I, I, you know, I, as I said, I don't really want to go down to battle on this, but I can't understand the logic of continuing with three months for a one-year severance pay, for a one-year contract, when we have other contracts that are three months for a four-year contract. That seems reasonable if we are going to do severance pay. But how do you wrap your head around this? It, it seems not, it's not logical.
Ms. Sherry, you have a?
Mayor Webber, Counselor V. Hill Copler, my, my contract was not for four years, and City Manager Drell Lepan Hills was not for four years, and her severance is for six months. The prior city clerk's contracts were for one year each, and they each had a three-month severance.
Okay, then I, then I stand corrected on that. So I guess it makes perfect sense to everybody, but it, you know, it makes sense. But, but before I finish, and then I will stop. You know, as we have this discussion about all this stuff, I'm thinking, whatever happened to the honor of public service? And that was the deal. You, everybody knows in public service, you don't get paid what you get in private practice, private, and, and enterprise. But this lump sum, this, these reversions and this severance pay, this is private industry stuff. And somehow, again, I'll go back to the idea that we need policy on these items, and, and we need to examine our stance on at-will employees, because I do think this is, this doesn't really jive that way. And, and then I also want to say that it is an honor to be in public service. And when you go into public service with a good heart, you know, especially if you're in an exempt position, and I've been in that position twice, I got no severance pay, nor did I even think I deserved any, because I wanted, it was an honor to be in public service. And so I took two different exempt jobs in, in the city and at Los Alamos County. So you know, that's just how the chips fall. If you really like it, and then you also understand you're not going to get paid as much. So, you know, we need to get back to that. And, and I think our salaries are very generous in the exempt status, and nobody's talked about benefits, but exempt employees get much more than classified employees do when it comes to benefits. I'm not talking health insurance, but I am talking other benefits. And, you know, those, those are also important. But you know, it, it's a whole examination of how we do business, and I think it's important for us. I don't think there's any one of us who would take our own checkbook out, unless you were really rich, and just write a check, you know, out of your own account for this. You know, it's taxpayer money, and we need to remember that. So I think those are the points that, thank you for allowing me.
Counselor, I appreciate your comments. I think you and I see things the same way and arrive at opposite conclusions, which is interesting. I do agree that public service is something that is an honor, and it is above and beyond salary. The reason people take on these jobs, including you all as elected officials in the city council, is for a chance to make a difference in our community. And it is a very noble and honorable undertaking. It has very, when you get to the kind of job we're discussing here tonight, it has very different public scrutiny. You are likely to read about yourself in the newspaper, not always in a flattering way, in ways that you may not always recognize. But people do that because they believe in our city and in our community. And the question is, what is the philosophy of employment that we want to extend to those individuals? To listen to some of the conversation tonight reminds me of a kind of social Darwinism applied to top managers, that, well, if they don't like it, we can find somebody else. When in fact, what we're really trying to do is create a, a strong, unified team of managers who want to work as hard and as consistently and as ethically and morally as possible on behalf of the residents of Santa Fe. And so questions about on behalf of the residents of Santa Fe. And so questions about what if we cheat the system? Or what if we finagle the contract? Seem to me to underline a, as opposed to a noble and honorable view of public employment, a much more cynical and dark view of what we expect our top managers to deliver. And I I think what, again, I said this to councillor Garcia, he disagreed with me, but I believe it is, I I stand by my my fervent belief that in in the world of management, in the world of an organizational culture and development, things that send a signal about how we believe in, trust, and invest in our, all of our employees from the bottom up, attempts to send a message that we believe that our workers and our managers are the most important part of city government. They are our most important asset. And so something like a a recognition that there are no protections for someone in this kind of a position, and we acknowledge that, and we accept that that is something we want to protect the individual in in an honorable way, seems to me to be a good practice, good management, good culture, and the kind of thing that will, over time, build the the cadre of people who want to work and take on what you accurately said is a very noble and honorable profession, which is running the city of Santa Fe efficiently and effectively for the well-being of all the residents of our city. Councillor Garcia and then councillor Rivera, have your hands up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess I just want to set the record straight. I don't disagree that we need to invest in our employees. I strongly believe in that, and that's been a philosophy of mine. You know, ever since I was in middle management, managing a restaurant twenty years ago, I think that is critical. We invest in our employees. I think what we disagree on is what we see as investment. The philosophy of employment should also be equitable across all sectors, across all of our staff. And the reason why I brought forth this amendment is because it is not equitable. Do we have any other employees besides these three staff listed where they receive a severance? If they are asked to be, they're asked for their resignation by their supervisor or they're fired? No, the answer is no. They they're not treated in the same manner. And and so with that being said, why should these political appointees receive a golden parachute? I don't believe that is equitable treatment across all employees, across our team. It, to me, it shows that if you are in an appointed position, you get treated differently, which to me immediately brings division. And to me, that.
There are only three positions under the city charter, which I know you're familiar with, which have a different staff. This is one of them. People who are, every other employee in the city of Santa Fe is treated differently. Every other employee. So you're, if you think that every city employee should have a contract.
No, I don't, Mr. Mayor, and I had the floor, please.
So we're discussing one of only three employees for whom there is a contractual relationship. And yet you're wondering why not everybody has the same provision. The answer is because they are not in the same category under the city charter.
I understand that, but it's not required by city charter, Mr. Mayor. It's not required. And if you, and if you look at, and if you look at and you add up the expenses, these, this this would cost the city, you're looking at over a hundred thousand dollars. Just weeks ago, we were looking, we were having an argument in investing the, to our public housing trust fund. And where is this hundred thousand dollars going to come from? It can come from here. And I think this is, we need to ensure that we are being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And and by offering golden parachutes to political appointees is not that. There are other means where we can show and invest in staff. And by doing it when they're out the door is not the appropriate means. We invest in staff when they're on board. We build them up. We show them, we want you part of the team. That way, they don't want to leave. So with that, I want to make a comment in regards to councillor Real's kind of loophole. Ms. McSherry, would adding the language, if, so I'm open to the amendment and looking, you know, hearing councillor Veal Coppler's potential amendment for one month, because I honestly believe we need to begin to start changing the precedent that was set. Precedent was set, and it said, last administration did this. Well, we're going to continue and do this. We need to set precedent and change and show that we're not going to allow this to happen anymore. So with that, Ms. McSherry, if we added the language, if the person is fired or terminated before November 2nd, and I believe that's the 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 election day. So if this person is fired before the election, then let them receive the their severance. If they're fired after the election day, when the administration knows that they potentially are out the door, I think that should be off limits. Because I think, you know, we had talked about in good faith, it wouldn't happen. Well, we all, we've seen what happens in good faith when administrations are out the door. We're seeing it currently with our presidential administration. And I think we we need to do what we need to do to protect ourselves as a city. We need to protect the investment, the taxpayer dollar that the city has entrusted us with. And so Ms. McSherry, would that language suffice if we added that into the, into this particular language that's in the contract right now?
Mayor Weber, councillor Garcia, you're saying if you added, if separation occurs before November 3rd on the mayor's initiative, et cetera, for part A?
Yes, yes, correct, correct. So it would, it would then read, if separation occurs upon the mayor's initiative, or if the employee resigns at the request of the mayor, and this is where it would be inserted, before November 2nd, you would introduce that language, then it would read all the same. That way we're protected. We don't have to feel like we have to ensure that there is good faith. And the employee then feels like they're protected as well. The investment that the mayor was speaking about is still there. It's still intact.
Yeah.
I I believe we have an amendment that's been seconded that's on the floor. The councillor is now offering a second amendment.
No, I'm not offering a second amendment. I'm asking, would that suffice, would that language suffice? I haven't introduced a second amendment, councillor.
I know, but but we're talking about the amendment you already have on the floor, and you're going back to an amendment to to discuss an issue that councillor Real had already brought up. So I think we need to, we need to deal with your amendment, and then we need to look.
Councillor, councillor Romer Werth, I I object to your, because you could have objected when councillor Real was bringing the matter up. And for you to interject now when I'm trying to find a solution to the matter, I find it inappropriate. I think that's inexcusable, that I'm trying to find a solution to what another councillor asked our city attorney to do, and I proposed a solution to it. And for you to interject when I've done that, and you didn't do it priorly, I think that is completely unfair.
Mayor Weber, I don't think a prior.
You just muted yourself.
I did, sorry. And I think the the contrary point that was raised is that then the employee doesn't have the protection for those three months. So I do think this is, is a different amendment. We should probably either vote on the existing amendment or rescind it. I would just want to point, there are some technical issues with the current amendment, probably as well. There's references to part A in parts B and C. So I do think we probably would want to construct it differently.
Okay, so so then with with that, Ms. McSherry, what I want to do is, I want to withdraw my amendment then. That way, we don't have the objections and point of orders. I'll withdraw my amendment if the second would so would be so kind to do so and introduced an amendment to my amendment. Or my, introduce an amendment, not an amendment to an amendment, my, a new amendment, which would introduce the language after the word mayor in the second sentence in section A, include the language November at the request of the mayor prior to November 2nd, 2021. And then that's it. I'm okay with leaving the three months because I think at that point, if we've set the precedence that it's, it's, we've done this, I think it, we really need to start to look at how we're going to introduce language in future contracts. I'm okay with leaving the three months there, but I think we we need to ensure that it's not a last minute done in in some means unsportsmanlike. So with that, that's my amendment.
Councillor Garcia, to insert the words prior to November 2nd in section 4A, after the word mayor on the second line, what is on my second line of the contract. Is there a second for that motion?
Can we add the word 2021?
Yep. Yes, I included that in my amendment.
November 2nd, 2021. There's a, there's a motion from councillor Garcia, second from councillor, councillor Veal Coppler. Is there any discussion about that amendment?
Can you read the whole sentence again with the amendment?
Sure. It would read, if separation occurs upon the mayor's initiative, or if the employee resigns at the request of the mayor prior to November 2nd, 2021, the employee shall be provided with a lump sum payment equal to three months' salary, less applicable withholding taxes and other standard deductions. So that's the entire sentence.
Is there discussion? I see two hands up, but I'm not sure they're relevant. Councillor Rivera, did you want to address this moment?
Not specifically this, but I wanted Ms. McSherry to clarify what she said earlier about if this contract is not approved, that the mayor can set his own salary for the contractor. And that basically it would be said, I think the public may misunderstand that.
Mayor Weber, councillor Rivera, is this a question? I'm happy to answer the question. I just want to make sure we answer at the right time. Is this, is this relevant to the proposed amendment that we're talking about right now?
Not to the amendment, it's to what you said earlier. And I think councillor woman Veal Coppler may have misunderstood it as well.
I guess just to, overall, to clarify, consent by the governing body is required of the mayor's appointments. That that is the role of the governing body. The city has, for some period of time, offered contractual protections as well. And those, and in exchange of offering those protections, the salary has been set in contract. There's nothing in city code or charter that says a contract has to be adopted or that the salary needs to be in the in the contract.
So he can set, sorry, so he can set the salary, but the appointment still has to have approval of the governing body?
Mayor Weber, councillor, yes, the consent of the governing body, correct. So the selection of a person, the person, similar to confirmations of cabinet secretaries, the person's name is up for consent, their salary is not.
Right, just wanted to make that clear. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes. Councillor Lindell, your hand is up. You have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. I'm calling for the question, please.
Okay, in that case, we'll proceed directly to a vote on the amendment to add the words prior to November 2nd, 2021 to line, section 4A of the contract.
Mayor, don't we have to vote on calling the question?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Not debatable, but yes, yeah.
Yeah, it's not debatable, but it's voted, we vote on calling the question first. So if the assistant clerk could call the roll on calling the question.
Yes. Councillor Real?
Yes.
Councillor Abeta?
Yes.
Councillor Caset Sanchez?
Yes.
Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor Lindell?
Yes.
Councillor Rivera?
Assuming everyone's had a chance to speak, yes.
Councillor Romer Werth?
Yes.
Councillor Veal Coppler?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes. So now we proceed immediately to a vote on the amended, on the motion for the amendment. If you could call the roll on the proposed amendment, please.
Absolutely. Councillor Abeta?
Yes.
Councillor Caset Sanchez?
Oh.
Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor Lindell?
No.
Councillor Rivera?
Yes.
Councillor Romer Werth?
No.
Councillor Veal Coppler?
Yes.
Councillor Real?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
No.
Motion is carried.
Motion carries. So the language is inserted in 4A as proposed by councillor Garcia. Are there other amendments to the contract as proposed? All right. In that case, if we're ready to vote on the contract as amended, let's see, do we need a motion to, we have a motion to adopt the contract. Do we need a motion to adopt the contract as amended? No.
Mayor, no, the main, essentially, the main motion has been amended.
Main motion has been amended, so we're ready to vote on the contract as amended.
Mayor?
Yes.
How can we vote on a contract that hasn't been approved by the contractor?
Well, I guess the process is we vote what we would offer and then present it to that individual for their acceptance or rejection.
So it may be back or it may not?
I assume that's, I I think that's right. I mean, we are, we're, the governing body in its wisdom has amended the agreement that was negotiated. We don't negotiate it with the individual now. We vote to our best ability. If this is a contract, we want to proceed with as an offer. And then there's another step where it's presented to Christine for her acceptance or rejection.
All right, just so we're all clear that it may be back or it may not. And I assume we'll all hear one way or the other.
Is that correct, city attorney, if I got it right?
Mayor Weber, councillors, my understanding is that Ms. Mahal's acceptance is contingent of the, of the appointment is contingent on having a contract. So if she does not accept these contractual terms, we would have to come back with a different contract.
Councillor, is that, is that answer the question, councillor?
Yes.
Councillor woman Real, your hand is up.
Just a point of clarification. So the motion, the original motion, was to accept the contract as written. And then we've made subsequent, subsequent amendments. So do we have to change the original motion?
Mayor Weber, councillor Real, the way I was understanding, the amendments were amendments to the main motion. Which is how they would.
As written now, having been amended.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So the main motion has been amended to include these contractual changes.
Correct. Okay, any other clarifications or comments on the matter in front of us? Seeing none, could the assistant clerk please call the roll?
Councillor Caset Sanchez? Ask. Councillor Garcia?
Yes, and I'd like an opportunity to explain my vote.
Councillor Lindell?
Yes.
Councillor Rivera?
Yes.
Councillor Romer Werth?
Yes.
Councillor Veal Coppler?
Yes.
Councillor Real?
Yes.
Councillor Abeta?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes, and I will also explain my vote. But first councillor Garcia has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and I think, you know, all my colleagues as we worked on this contract, I know it was grueling and, uh, but I think it was all in the best interest of the citizens and, and our employees. And I just want to wish Ms. Mahalchek that, uh, look forward to success should she agree to the contract that has been amended. I think, um, I do have strong confidence that, uh, should she agree to the contract, she will be a strong city clerk. And, and I look forward to just what she brings to the position. And, and so with that, uh, just want to thank, you know, all the tireless hours we've put forward to this. I know it was a long and growing review of the contract. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Anyone else want to explain their vote? I, I certainly do, but, um, I don't want to preclude anyone else. I, I would, uh, add my vote of confidence to, uh, Christine. I am, uh, very happy to have, uh, appointed her to this position. I think she has an outstanding record of public service. I think she has a, a deep commitment to the city where she grew up and is raising her own children. I think, uh, we are fortunate to attract someone of her outstanding character and capability to this job. That said, I think, um, I disagree with some of the amendments. I think they do not reflect, uh, that kind of respect for her. I think they diminish the honor and nobility of public service by, uh, attempting to, uh, haggle, uh, with her over something that is deeply, uh, earned by her performance. I think we're trying, what we're trying to do with this city government is improve our performance across the board, professionalize it, modernize it, uh, make it, uh, honorable and respected and increase trust. If there is anything going on in America right now, uh, it is a lack of trust in public, uh, the public sector. And when we, uh, suggest that the mayor would do something like fire somebody, uh, in the last weeks or months of his term in order to financially reward someone, that reinforces a very cynical view of public service and elected officials, all of whom we are. We're in effect telling the public that we're not trustworthy. Uh, I believe we are, uh, building a fine city government together, all of us. I believe the managers that we have working for us now and the employees who report to them, have done incredible work over the last nine to 10 months under the most adverse conditions. COVID, an economic recession, uh, social issues across the land, personal concerns. And they've held it together. They've stood as a team. They've worked tirelessly. And I believe that good management and good human resources practices, uh, recognize that the kinds of contracts that we give people when they take on these jobs or the kind of rewards and recognitions, uh, and safeguards that we give people who are our public employees need to reflect the honor and the integrity of Santa Fe city government. It is an outstanding group of individuals. And this contract and the changes that were made while I voted for the contract, I do not think send the right signal, uh, either to Ms. Mahalchek or to others who we would try to, uh, encourage to step up, who we would, uh, attempt to, uh, recruit to these very challenging, important and ultimately, uh, uh, critical jobs and in some ways thankless jobs. And we need to remember that, uh, things we say and do in these public settings send signals far beyond, uh, one specific contract. And so I hope as we move forward, uh, uh, as a governing body, uh, through the end of COVID, the end is in sight, but not over yet. As we move toward a new budget, we look for ways to reinforce the honor and the lofty aspirations of Santa Fe city government and not to undermine it in any way, shape or form. So that, that is my vote. Um, I believe that is the end of our business for this evening. The, I'm informed by a text message that the finance committee meeting has been rescheduled, which is appropriate, uh, to take up matters, uh, equally important, but not jamming it in at 10 o'clock tonight. Uh, so with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.